Good evening and welcome to the March 16th Lone Tree City Council meeting. We will officially begin the meeting at 7:03, just to allow time for folks to join us virtually this evening. While we wait, I will give you an overview of how our meeting is going to be organized this evening. So in support of social distancing requirements and based on space limitations in our building, the city is limiting physical attendance at our public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials. We will continue to provide access to the public meetings via electronic participation. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when not speaking and maintain six feet of social distancing. The city also implements symptom monitoring measures for attendees such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facility health screening survey before entering our meeting. Again, while we wait till 7:03 to officially begin, I'll overview how public comment will be provided during our virtual meeting. There are three ways that public comment can be shared this evening. Comments that were submitted in writing prior to this meeting were already forwarded to city council and they will be included in our official meeting minutes. If you would like to type a comment during the public comment portion of the agenda, click the "Ask a Question" in the sidebar of your virtual meeting. Enter your name and address along with your public input. Your name and public comment will be forwarded to council after the meeting and be included in the public record. If you would like to speak to council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the "Ask a Question" box in the sidebar on your screen. Please submit your name, address, and phone number, and you will receive a call back from the city to share your public comment. All comments should be directed to city council, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Again, this public comment is the time for you to provide direct feedback to council. It is not a question and answer session. We get to listen to what your thoughts are. So again, we are going to be waiting till 7:03-ish to start our official meeting this evening to allow for folks to join virtually. So please be patient. Thanks. It is now 7:03. I would like to open the regular meeting of the Lone Tree City Council, and I'd like you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So Councilmember Carpenter has an excused absence and will not be joining us this evening. I'll ask our city clerk to call roll for the rest of council.
Councilmembers Anderson.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Mayor Potem Brunick.
Here.
Mayor Malley.
Here. There are no amendments to the agenda. It is adopted as published. Are there any conflicts of interest from council?
None known.
None.
Okay. We are now on to our public comment portion, and again, I will repeat the three ways public comment are provided during our virtual meeting. First, any public comment that was submitted ahead of time has been forwarded to council and will be included in our official meeting minutes. If you would like to type your public comment to council right now, please do so in the "Ask a Question" box. Please include your name, your address, and your comment. It will be forwarded to council and also included in the official meeting minutes. And finally, the third way to provide comment is to request in the "Ask a Question" box to be contacted by staff and share your comment live over our telephone. I was informed that there have been folks who have indicated they would like to participate live using their phones. I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk, Jay Robb, and he is going to facilitate that process. Mr. Robb.
Thank you, Mayor. We're calling our first citizen request for public comment. Hello? I will try that number one more time.
If you're joining us virtually, we are just waiting. Some of, in the community, have indicated they want to be connected live via phone, so we are calling them now so they can share their public comment.
Hi, Anna. This is the city of Lone Tree calling you for public comment tonight.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks. Please introduce yourself with your name and address, and try to limit your public comments to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Anna Cardwell. My address is 9980 Trans Station Circle, Unit 135. Yeah, I'm just speaking on the pit bull ban. I just wanted to sort of share a personal story really quickly. So when I was in high school, I had a friend who, I went to high school in Lakewood, and I would go over to her house a lot, and they had brought home a dog, and she told me that it was a pit bull, purebred pit bull. And she had told me that her mom wanted to get a guard dog, so they adopted a pit bull. And this pit bull just wouldn't, you know, it was just the sweetest dog, like no violence, no violent nature at all, just was like the most lovable thing. And, you know, I've absolutely loved dogs and animals, and, you know, being a resident here in Lone Tree, I really feel that it should be considered to let people own, you know, these breeds that are, have these sort of bad wraps, even though they're, you know, really harmless breeds. And we really, it's almost like a victim blaming situation. We're blaming the dogs for being violent or, you know, misbehaved when, you know, we all know that it's not about the dog or the breed, it's about the owner. So, and I think as a city, we can really, we really have the power and the tools to be bringing these, you know, animals, any breed of dog, and treating them with the care and love and, you know, everything that you should treat a dog with. With that, I just, I don't see why, you know, the breed should be restricted.
Thank you very much for taking your time this evening to provide comment. We very much appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and I think we've got another, I think we've got at least one more, maybe two more?
Three more that I'm aware of.
Three more.
Hello?
Hello, Aiden. This is the city of Lone Tree calling you for public comment at tonight's meeting.
Sure.
Go ahead and introduce yourself with your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Aiden Gannon. I reside, my business address in Lone Tree is 9231 East Lincoln Avenue. I'm the owner of Pet Stuff Food in Lone Tree. We're a retail facility serving pets. These specific bans have always struck me as a tempting solution to a serious problem that, that of a dog behaving to humans and other dogs, that doesn't really address the issue in any serious way at all. We all know that any dog is capable of antisocial behavior. A ban does nothing to address other breed incidents or aid municipalities' residents and pet owners in actively preventing pet-related injuries. As a pet-related business owner for 17 years in Douglas County, I have never refused pet service or entry to my businesses based upon breed, either grooming pets sitting or in a retail location. I have, of course, refused to work with dogs of any breed based on accomplishment. We always make the decision based on the individual dog, and I'd likely have that dog causing individual staff member, a client, or another client's dog. The responsibility we've always taken very seriously, and we know that injuries can come from any dog if not properly treated, respected, and raised properly by responsible owners who understand how to raise a dog and know that, just like owning a car, owning a dog has potential built-in risks, and it must be respected. Instead of bans, I always wonder why municipalities don't take it upon themselves, swap their guidance, to actively engage the residents and pet owners and non-pet owners alike in what is expected of the owner within the city limits and how to deal with pet-related interactions. Lone Tree is a wonderful city to do business in and to own a dog and reside in, and has a multitude of great businesses for residents to frequent, pet-related businesses for residents to frequent. There is an assumption sometimes that pet owners are so much knowledgeable about responsibly raising pets and have some, and some have extraordinary knowledge base, others understand the basics, but there are some who don't even understand the basics of pet ownership. So, so these dogs are more likely to be a problem dog, plus little understand, and plus the owners have little understanding of how to control the dog in a situation that may have a high risk of injury. Non-pet owners' actions around pets also lead to an increased risk of incidents occurring. Instead of spending resources on ineffective, when I believe are ineffective bans, I would love to see a city work with local pet businesses, experts, HOAs, apartment complexes, et cetera, to engage residents in a positive manner and to help all residents be knowledgeable and responsible in interacting with pets around the city. Creating a city that is not only, that is not only great to own the pet business in, has pet-friendly apartments, condos, and HOAs, and fantastic open spaces for pet owners to enjoy, but is also welcoming to all dogs while actively promoting best practices of pet ownership, gives the city an edge when trying to attract new residents, new businesses, and new services in the area. I know from my customers' feedback that owners of banned breeds refuse to live and actively avoid spending money in Lone Tree as a protest to the ban. Other dog owners would also limit engagement in Lone Tree commerce due to the principled opposition of the ban. Pet foster parents tell us that although it makes absolute sense for them to work within Lone Tree where they work, they will not do so for fear that they are not going to be able to help as many pets as they would do living outside of the city, for fear that those pets may be construed as being banned breed or some mix of a banned breed. Some pet rescues also refuse to hold events at our store.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, council.
Okay. Sir, thank you very much for providing comment, and again, I apologize, but we do limit comment to three minutes, so thank you, and we appreciate you taking the time to communicate with us this evening. I think we have another. Thank you, sir. I think we're trying to get the next public comment person now.
This is Taylor.
Hi, Taylor. This is city of Lone Tree calling for your public comment at tonight's meeting. Go ahead and introduce yourself and your address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Taylor Roberts. I'm a Tri-County Health Department located at 6162 South Willow Drive, Greenwood Village, 80111. Tri-County Health Department would like to announce their support for Ordinance 2104, the licensing of tobacco retailers in the city of Lone Tree. In October 2019, the Tri-County Board of Health declared youth vaping a public health emergency, encouraging cities and counties to combat the problem by adopting evidence-based policies that limit youth access to these addictive and harmful products, and committed Tri-County resources to supporting those efforts. In 2019, approximately 20% of students in Douglas County reported using vape products at least once over the past 30 days, and many students continued to report that purchasing and obtaining these products is easy. For any retailer wanting to increase revenue by disregarding the legal sales age of these products, there is limited discouragement to do so. Licensing the retailers of tobacco and nicotine products at the city level, coupled with regularly occurring compliance checks and impactful penalties for illegal sales, has been shown to decrease the number of illegal sales in the community, limiting the access of young people that young people have to these products, all while having a minimal impact on retailers who abide by the law. We know that a program which includes two to four annual compliance checks and requiring the suspension of a sales license following a failed check works to incentivize responsible tobacco retailer practices. Effective and responsible tobacco control through the licensing of retailers may also advance equity in your community. Low-income communities and individuals of color, as well as individuals who identify as LGBTQ, are disproportionately impacted by the targeting and manipulative strategies used by the tobacco industry, which often manifest themselves in the retail environment. Licensing retailers and holding them accountable for illegally selling nicotine products to young people who are targeted by the tobacco industry can help begin to undo some of these disparities. We applaud your effort to do so and encourage you to continue to evaluate other equitable strategies, such as limits on tobacco and nicotine product marketing and coupon. I want to thank and recognize the efforts of the Lone Tree Youth Commission, city staff, city council, the mayor, the city attorney's office, and the community partners who all stood up to address this issue in Lone Tree. Specifically, I want to commend Austin Good, Leanna Jessick-Rysdale, Rick Parsons, Jay Robb, Linda McCow, and the passionate and inspiring members of the Lone Tree Youth Commission for their work. The city has conducted a thoughtful and engaging policymaking process with the best interests of its residents at the forefront, and TTHD is grateful to be the city's partner in this effort. Tri-County will continue to be your partner, serving the city's needs and offering insights from a public health perspective. We look forward to continuing to support the city in promoting the healthiest possible community for all its residents and visitors. Thank you for your time and consideration, and congratulations on making this huge commitment to protect Lone Tree young people from tobacco and nicotine products.
Thank you for taking the time this evening to provide your feedback to us. We very much appreciate it. All right, and we have one, thank you, sir, one more this evening.
This is Steve.
Hi, Steve. This is the city of Lone Tree calling you for your public comment at tonight's meeting. Go ahead and introduce yourself with your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I'll do it. Thank you for your call. Hello, everyone. My name is Steve Sorenson. My home is 9703 Tall Grass Circle, and I wish to provide you an update on activities of Lone Tree Sustainability Team. As a refresher, the objectives of the Sustainability Team are education, action, legacy, and results. We've been able to take action in all three, all four categories. Our primary area of focus has been determined by the team was to focus on trash and recyclables as a measurable objective. What we saw is the low-hanging fruit, or low-hanging trash in this case. Since we kicked off, we've already had two cleanup missions this year alone. We had one a little over a week ago, and we had more than 30 people attend that event, all wearing masks and safely distanced, by the way, and our job was to go out and clean up public areas around Lone Tree. As part of our education campaign, we've had speakers at each event, including Waste Connections, provide education on appropriate recycling protocol, and Lone Tree's very own Kelly First brought an update on activities the city has focused on, and we will continue our education efforts in each of the events that we have in going out and picking up trash and what have you. We have been meeting also with Kelly's team, the city Sustainability Committee, which has been terrific, and we applaud the city of Lone Tree for this group. It's been a great relationship. Thank you. Our next community cleanup event is May the 15th, 9:00 a.m., and I would like to personally invite you to join your neighbors and bring all your crew from Lone Tree with you, and we'll have some fun, so please do, if you can make it, we'd love to have. We want to express our appreciation for the city of Lone Tree and specifically Councilman Jay Carpenter, who's been a real assistance to us and a driving force and a good trash picker-upper. And of course, I'd like to thank my wife, Carol, who is a driver to make this thing really grow. She's the, really, the catalyst and organizer behind our events, and she makes it happen. So I think I'm under three minutes. Just want to, again, appreciate, demonstrate our appreciation to you and what you do, and hopefully you can join us and we can keep this thing going. Thank you so much, and I hope to see you soon.
Thanks for your good work, and thanks for providing comment this evening. We very much appreciate it. All right, and do we have one more?
Mayor, I do not see any requests for public comment.
All right. Thank you, and thank you to everyone who shared their viewpoints this evening. All right, our announcements, upcoming events in the city of Lone Tree, and again, more information is available at cityoflonetree.com and lonetryartcenter.org. COVID community testing at campus credit union continues every day from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through the end of this month. Visit the city website for more information. Health One COVID Community Immunization operated by COVID Check Colorado is happening Wednesday through Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Charles Schwab parking lot. Visit the Tri-County website for more information at healthonecares.com. You must sign up in advance for a vaccine. Take to the highway the music of James Taylor, excuse me, Carole King, I love her too, and Carly Simon, is happening Friday, March 19th through Saturday, March 20th, at the Lone Tree Arts Center main stage and livestream. Visit lonetryartcenter.org for all showtimes. A livestream of National Geographic Live: Mysterious Seas is happening Wednesday, March 31st at 8:00 p.m. There will be a community blood drive on Wednesday, March 31st from 11:00 to 3:45 p.m. at the Lone Tree Arts Center in our event hall. Again, please visit the city website for signup information. We do have a ceremonial presentation this evening, a proclamation honoring the National Society of the Children of the American Revolution. Whereas the National Society of the American Revolution is the nation's oldest and largest patriotic youth organization, and whereas NASCAR focuses on patriotism, service, and education about our American heritage, and whereas the Colorado State Society, NASCAR, is celebrating its 2020-2021 state president's project theme of remembering our four-legged patriots to support the War Dog Memorial, Colorado, and whereas the Colorado State Society's 73rd Annual State Conference is being held at the Lone Tree Golf Club and Hotel on March 27th, 2021, with William F. Daniels III as the state president. The city would therefore like to congratulate NASCAR on its 73 years of service, and they're remembering our four-legged friends, patriots, to support the War Dog Memorial. And witness whereof, I have hair in two, set my hand, and caused the official seal of the city of Lone Tree to be affixed the 16th day of March 2021. So congrats to them on their great work. Then next on our agenda is our consent agenda, which includes minutes of the March 2nd, 2021 regular meeting, claims for the period of February 23rd to March 8th, 2021, our January 21st treasurer's report. I'll ask for a motion on consent this evening.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero. Next to our administrative matters, our first up is a public hearing on Ordinance 21-03, an ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 6 of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code to authorize licensing of common consumption areas operated by promotional associations in designated entertainment districts. This is second reading, and I am opening the public hearing on this topic. Our first presentation from staff will be Jay Robb, our city clerk. Mr. Robb.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Bringing you the second reading of the Common Consumption Ordinance, 21-03, excuse me. And we just want to give you a reminder of the origins of common consumption areas. The structure you receive a summary of was introduced by the state legislature in 2011, and there are over 16 cities with common consumption areas throughout Colorado. And as we've seen over the last year, a lot of these cities have tried to allow restaurants and bars to utilize outdoor spaces. So yeah, I think we've recognized the assets that we have between common areas, between our bars and restaurants, the safety that exists due to COVID currently, and also efforts that Jeff Hallwell spoke about a month ago when he introduced this topic, to help possibly revitalize certain areas of our city. So these are some of the terms that will be codified under the ordinance. The common consumption area is kind of the final myopic piece, if you will, the actual, think of it as the local liquor mechanism or local liquor license that will be approved. But there are all these different layers that exist throughout the process, all of which that are decided publicly in either a city council meeting or with you all acting as the local liquor licensing authority. So again, just as a refresher, the common consumption area is the open indoor or outdoor public space where patrons 21 or older can consume alcohol from the surrounding liquor licenses, liquor license establishments. Alcohol can only be purchased and consumed during predetermined times, within controlled boundaries, with restricted vehicle traffic, and under the control of a promotional association. Those promotional associations, or PAs, are comprised of our local businesses within an entertainment district, and those can be bars and restaurants, and also different stores and shops that want to participate in the common consumption boundary. Again, the promotional association exists within the entertainment district, which is kind of like large encompassing map of a designated area. And every common consumption area must be located within entertainment district, and again, with council decisions throughout the process, either acting as the city council or the local liquor licensing authority. Some of the parameters on an entertainment district is that they can be no larger than 100 acres, and they must contain at least 20,000 square footage of liquor licensed premises. They have to be established by a council resolution, and such resolution can specify requirements such as size, security, and the hours of operation for any common consumption area. Again, promotional association must be comprised of two liquor license establishments that are joined for the purpose of applying for a common consumption area and other businesses within the CCA boundary. The promotional association applies and holds the common consumption area license and is responsible for controlling the common consumption area. They have a board of directors with members of each liquor license establishment. The promotional association must carry liability insurance and file annual reports to the authority, being city council, and the promotional association must be approved at a public meeting of the council acting as the licensing authority before they would be able to obtain the common consumption license or control a common consumption area. We'll get into the process in the next slide, but the promotional association submits an application for a common consumption area to the authority. It must be approved at a public hearing to determine the needs and desires within a one-mile radius of that common consumption area, or if you think of it as a liquor license that would be approved by council acting as the authority. Again, they must include safety and security plans to address how the area will remain in compliance with state and local laws, and that's kind of where you all would get into the specific details and diagrams about hours of operation, boundary, security, signage, pedestrian access, and vehicle traffic controls. So this is kind of the natural progression we wanted to outline for council beyond tonight's ordinance. Again, tonight's ordinance would codify the framework of allowing a common consumption area within the city. If approved by the council, the next logical step would be perhaps to designate an entertainment district with, you know, some potential areas of interest around the city, and of course, that would be in a public meeting by resolution approved by the council. Third would be approving a promotional association, approved as council acting as the licensing authority, also in a public meeting. And lastly, council- And lastly, council as the licensing authority would consider the boundaries and specifics of a common consumption area submitted by the promotional association, also at a public hearing. And step five is the operation of a common consumption area with the annual review of the license through the city. And we got into this a little bit last time, but the ordinance does give additional liquor license powers to the city manager or his or her designee to review common consumption areas administratively. And if there are no issues in the previous year, they would be renewed. If there were issues, they would go through a hearing process similar to other licenses that have received violations. And then I got ahead of myself kind of summarizing step six, but that's the annual renewal and recertification process for both the common consumption areas and the promotional association also has to file annually with the city and make sure that they're in good standing with the city. We also wanted to remind council that common consumption areas are not a model that may fit everyone's vision, and we have other tools in the liquor licensing toolbox to help us get business owners, you know, to the type of activity that they're looking for. And we have these tools currently that we've used in the past, temporary modifications. That's, you know, a single liquor license expanding into an open public area for a designated certain amount of time or certain days throughout the summer. And I gave the example of spoons and tunes that you may remember from the vistas. We also have special event permits that allow nonprofit organizations to sell donated alcohol. You know, first, those specific events that you're probably familiar with, such as forks, corks, and ales that happen over at Park Meadows Retail Resort and several of the Schwager Ranch events that occur over there. So we just wanted to remind council that we have several tools depending on the type of business or type of event that they're envisioning, and common consumption area may not be, you know, for every location around the city. And with that, I'll defer to any questions.
Thanks, Jay. Okay, council, any questions on this? No, I think you did a great job when we first went through it, and I think council is very much looking forward to working on this enabling legislation. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to see if there is any public comment.
Mayor, there is no request for public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, since there is no request for public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion from council.
I move to adopt ordinance 21-03, an ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 6 of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code to authorize licensing of common consumptions areas operated by promotional associations in designated entertainment districts on second reading.
Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. All right, next on our, thank you. On our, next on our agenda, we have another public hearing on ordinance 21-04, an ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code by adding a new Article 5 concerning tobacco retailer licensing. And again, this is second reading, and it is a public hearing, which I am opening now. And presenting this evening will be Austin Good, Assistant to the City Manager. Austin?
Great, thank you, Mayor and council. We can go to the next slide. And before I get too deep into it, I'm actually going to introduce Marcus Twy, who is a member of our Lone Tree Youth Commission. You'll recall from our previous meetings that the Lone Tree Youth Commission has been really heavily involved in this process. So Marcus, are you on the line?
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
We can, Marcus. Welcome. Good to hear your voice.
Thanks for having me. Good evening to the city council and all present. It's been a while since I've attended a city council meeting, so I'll start by introducing myself. Yeah, me too. My name is Marcus Twy, and I have served on the Lone Tree Youth Commission for almost three years now. Originally, Anna Smith was scheduled to present tonight, but she recently had oral surgery and isn't able to give a speech, so I will be filling in for her. I'm very excited to be representing the Youth Commission tonight to witness the final steps of the tobacco ordinance that we have been working on with the city council. The Youth Commission first started to think about tackling the issue of tobacco products in October of last year, and almost two years later, we are excited to see how our ideas have taken shape. The rise of new e-cigarette products and a resurgence of addictive nicotine and tobacco products has gained new popularity among younger populations. And as a young teen who has grown up in the City of Lone Tree, I have witnessed firsthand how my peers can be victims of tobacco and nicotine addiction. The problems caused by tobacco and nicotine use have begun to leak into Lone Tree schools, parks, and public places. And I'm glad to see that our city is stepping up to protect myself and my peers. In our research for our tobacco ordinance recommendation, we discussed with many different officials, including Taylor Roberts, the Chronic Disease Prevention Coordinator from the Tri-County Health Department, and looked at other cities such as Castle Rock, Denver, Aspen, and their policies on tobacco. We also relied on our unique perspective as teenagers growing up in Lone Tree to direct our thoughts into what we, as the Youth Commission, thought would be most effective as a way to combat the issues we've seen in our community. As a member of the Youth Commission, I'm very pleased that the city council provided us with the opportunity to utilize our information, research, and experience to present our recommendations in a way that can positively impact teens throughout Lone Tree and the surrounding areas. We are thrilled to finally see this project begin its final steps of approval. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation, Marcus.
Thanks, Marcus. Appreciate it. And once again, I have to follow up with that.
Yeah, Austin, you got a tough job.
I've got a terrible job. We can go to the next slide. So again, this is something that has been brought to council. This is the second reading. What we're looking at is an administrative license that would be renewed annually by tobacco retailers. This is in alignment with state legislation, which is also going to be requiring tobacco retailers to be licensed this summer. We're proposing a $250 initial application fee with a $200 annual renewal fee. This covers the staff time for administration and two compliance checks per year and the time to process those applications administratively. That's the little bit of extra chunk upfront. We believe this is in line with neighboring jurisdictions. Castle Pines is lower. However, we believe they aren't quite making up their cost of administering the license. And so that was a priority we heard from council that we wanted to make sure was addressed. Next slide. So we're really looking at this to be a very low barrier, easy application process for retailers, really simple one-page application. The staff would review and approve this because this is an administrative license versus a liquor license. This would not have to come to council for every individual approval. And then the license would be issued administratively by our city clerk's office. We did have some changes that were incorporated into the ordinance based on local priorities, based, or changes from the state's legislation. So one of those changes is that schools serving grade six and below would be excluded from the 500-foot distancing requirement. This is mostly to reflect our growth patterns, understanding of charter schools and office areas, and as well as understanding that youth in grade six and below are much less likely to be leaving campus to be going to a gas station to purchase tobacco products. And so due to this nature of growth in our community and that reason of really trying to target the youth that are most vulnerable, which would be in their teens, this was included in the ordinance. And then the licensing period does differ from the state's license. By us changing the licensing period, the state license will also line up with our local dates, which would be January 1 through December 31st, creating consistency for all retailers. Next slide. Diving a little bit deeper into the school distancing requirements, this is our current landscape. Regardless, retailers would be grandfathered in if they are within 500 feet of a school. But this does illustrate how one of our elementary schools that's located more in a commercial center does actually overlap within that 500-foot radius with two tobacco retailers. And so just further reason for why that distancing requirement was incorporated into the ordinance. Next slide. We do have some changes from the first reading that we do want to highlight. This came from council direction during the first reading, as well as some changes for clarity from our city attorney's office. So one of those was changing the age of being able to handle tobacco products from sellers and retailers. This was changed to under the age of 18 instead of legal sales age. This was something that we heard directly from our tobacco retail, retail community and from a representative from the Tobacco Retail Association that the council wanted to incorporate in the final ordinance, understanding that youth that might be 19 or 20 years old could be working in gas stations or other convenience stores. And another change that was made since first reading was around training. So this is one of those council priorities that we heard really loud and clear that we wanted to make sure was addressed. The way it's written in the ordinance is that the training requirement for obtaining a license wouldn't take place until January 2023, and that would be for renewals and new licenses. This is because we want to make sure that we're providing our retailers with a really robust thorough training product that's not rushed, considering the timeframe that we have between us implementing a license in June. We have identified a program through the state which is online, completed in about 30 to 45 minutes, and produces a certificate for the employee at the end of their training that we think is a really great tool that Tri-County helped us identify. However, it's not updated yet. There's a lot of things in there that need to be updated. And so we hope that by January 2023, the state's licensing, or not, the state's training product would be updated to the point where we feel comfortable requiring our retailers to take it. And if for some reason that training material is not updated, we will work with Tri-County Health to identify an alternative or create our own. In the meantime, with that said, we don't want to leave our retailers empty-handed starting this year with licensing. And so staff is going to be working with Tri-County Health Department on the development of training materials that can be distributed today or, you know, right before our licensing does take effect. So while we won't have a formal training, produce a certificate requirement starting on June 1, we will have training materials in place that we're going to recommend that all retailers take advantage of. And then starting in January 2023, when they come back for their renewals, they will have to produce evidence of training for all their employees. Another change that was made was history or prior violations at council's request that was changed to history and prior violations. That'll help us. This is in regards to taking into account suspension or fine activities for those retailers. Next slide. Another change, this was something that was called by our city attorney's office. And there was a reference to the city council when it should have been licensing officers, so this is just a little bit of cleanup there for clarity. Under Section 5-6-5-100A, this added some language for clarity to make clear that decisions can be appealed. If anything is held against the tobacco retailer, they can go through an appeals process, and we wanted to make sure that was clear. And finally, the last change that we wanted to highlight was in regards to compliance dates. This is just clarifying that the licensing process would start on June 1. Again, no big change. This is mostly just a change for clarity. Next slide. So next, we're going to go ahead and talk about enforcement. We have 12 establishments that sell tobacco in the City of Lone Tree. Our police department estimates that it would take two detectives and one buyer to complete the checks, and the time for those checks would be two days for two checks annually. So essentially, one day to check 12 tobacco retailers, another day to check them again. We think this is really reasonable and is built into the licensing fee. Next slide. So when we talk about violations that could occur if they, if there was a retailer that failed a compliance check, during the first violation, we'd be looking at a $500 fine and up to a seven-day suspension or both. A second violation, $1,000 fine, up to a 30-day suspension or both. Upon a third violation, $1,500 fine and/or revocation of the license for up to one year or both. And the time period that those would have to accrue in is a 36-month period. We believe this is in line with all of our other local jurisdictions that have their own licensing programs. Excellent. Another big priority for council was a retailer support and education plan. So this was developed by our city clerk's office. Got to give Rick Parsons a lot of credit. Our deputy city clerk, he's really been taking the ball and running with it with a lot of the stuff and really been staying on top of it to ensure that in cooperation with Tri-County, we're able to really communicate out to our retailers the importance of, the importance of being a responsible tobacco retailer and also making sure that we don't have a lot of administrative red tape in the way. Because really, at the end of the day, this is about making sure that these products are kept out of the hands of kids, making them go through a very arduous process to get there. It does not help anyone, so. Part of this plan that we were directed to develop, staff will be reaching out to all license holders by email, phone, and letter. We've invited potential licensees to submit comments and attend the second reading of this ordinance tonight. We've also, will be inviting licensees to meet with the city clerk's office to review the new licensing procedure one-on-one if they desire, building and distributing an informational flyer to licensees to explain the licensing process, building out a webpage and web resources for those retailers. Something new that we wanted to make sure was added on to this list since the first reading was again, working with Tri-County Health Department to distribute and develop materials for tobacco retailers. They have a lot of resources we can already draw on, and they've been really spectacular in offering up to really make those custom to Lone Tree if needed. Next slide. So we do also want to make sure that we're continuing that outreach after licensing begins for the ordinance pass. The clerk's office is currently building out a tracking list and email list so we can have a regular email newsletter to connect to our tobacco retail holders on various topics that might come up, and also reminders about renewal periods. And when advisable, the city clerk's office is open to performing site visits with individual retailers to help walk them through any processes. So with that, we did want to open it up to council questions. As you are aware, we did receive six comments ahead of time, which have been distributed to council and included in the public record. Five of those were in support of the ordinance, one was against. And I'd be happy to hand it over to council if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Austin. All right, council, any questions on this?
No questions.
Any questions?
No questions, but thank you for your work on this, particularly the revisions that were requested last time. Really happy to see where we're headed. Thank you.
All right, it doesn't look like council has questions. Again, I think we want to say a huge thanks to our Youth Commission too for their good work on this. But I, this is a public hearing, so I do want to make sure we have an opportunity here from the public who didn't submit anything in advance. So do we have any requests for public comment on this issue?
Do not see any requests for public comment.
Okay, I appreciate the new tagline running on the bottom, giving folks direction on how to provide comment. So it makes me not feel like I have to pause for quite as long to give them opportunities. So, and I do appreciate that we did receive a comment in advance, so that was very much appreciated. All right, I'm going to then close our public hearing, and I will look for a motion from council on this issue.
I move to adopt ordinance 21-04, an ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code by adding a new Article 5 concerning tobacco retailer licensing on second reading.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. And again, thanks to our Youth Commission. Thank you to Tri-County Health Department for their great support of the Youth Commission through this process. And thank you to Austin and Leanna for, again, your great leadership with our Youth Commission. We very much appreciate it. And you're not going anywhere, sir, because now you're up on ordinance 21-05, an ordinance amending Section 10-8-40 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning the legal sales age for tobacco and the offense of underage possession of cigarettes, tobacco, or nicotine products. And again, this is a first reading, so Austin, please.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and dive right into this one. So this is ordinance to amend a couple parts of our code in regard to the age of sale as well as fine for age of, or for possession for minors. And so first, we'll tackle the age of sale. This one is very straightforward. The Federal Food Drug and Cosmetic Act was amended in December of 2019, which nationwide raised the age of sale of tobacco products from 18 to 21. This was amended within the state's statutes in 2020 on July 14th, which raised the state age of sale to 21. Just to be clear, as of today, you cannot buy tobacco products under the age of 21 in the City of Lone Tree. However, our code currently doesn't reflect that. It still currently lists 18 as the age of sale. And so this is cleanup on our part to make sure that our code is in alignment with the state and the federal government. Next slide. So the next thing to tackle is the thing that's a little messier, which is minor possession of tobacco. This is something that we've brought to council before to study session, trying to figure out what the right move is. Currently in our code, it is 18, and we can keep it there. This is a little out of sync with the age of sale. However, we did understand it was a council priority to not be punishing 19, 20-year-olds with possession of tobacco. with possession of tobacco products, and also understanding use of police resources. And so at the last study session when this was discussed, staff went back, our city attorney's office went back to try to see if there was a way that we could maintain an age of possession at 18, however, not create a really heavy criminal penalty for minors that are caught with tobacco products. Upon consultation with the city attorney, eliminating the penalties while still having an age of possession produced a lot of challenges. And so we have developed an alternative. Go to the next slide. We are recommending a staff that the fine would be reduced. This is after consultation with our city prosecutor, who also believes that having tobacco or a fine associated with tobacco isn't necessarily a bad thing in the context of being able to use it if they're also, at the same time, charged with a more severe crime. Often, a tobacco charge can be used in negotiating that down to create a reduced sentence. The current maximum fine for minors in possession of tobacco is $499. This is really rarely, if ever, used to that extent. As we illustrated during previous study sessions, we write these tickets very rarely to begin with, and when we do, what the more likely charge to come in is the youth is ordered to attend a tobacco class at a cost of $75. And so what would happen under this ordinance is the fine, maximum fine would be reduced from $499 to $100 to reflect that council priority of reducing the, reducing the burden on the youth that might be charged with making a stupid decision. This, again, is a maximum fine. It doesn't mean that every tobacco ticket that would be coming in would hit that $100 mark, just like we really don't write $499 tobacco tickets. In fact, I would say the most likely occurrence is this would probably only be used as a fine for repeat offenders. The much more common charge is to attend that tobacco class at an order at a fine of $75 at a cost of $75. So we go to the next slide. We'd be happy to open that up for council questions and any directions you'd like for a second reading.
Thank you, Austin. Okay, council, any thoughts on this? I think you've done a great, great job kind of threading the needle between intent and actually making sure we had the policies and practices in place we needed for our prosecutor, but also not being overly burdensome to the kids. We're just trying to get them to stop smoking.
Right.
So, or not start smoking. How about that? Even better. Any, any comments from council? Questions? No. I think we very much appreciate the study session time that we've allocated to this, and getting it where it is. So seeing no questions from council, I will look for a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 21-05, an ordinance amending Section 10-8-40 and Section 1-4-30 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning the legal sales age for tobacco and the offense of underage possession of cigarettes, tobacco, or nicotine products on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thanks, Austin. All right, we will look forward to second reading on that one. Next up this evening is community development, and we've got Resolution 21-12, a resolution approving a waiver of 100% of construction use tax and plan review and building permit fees for the Ridge Gate Station Affordable Housing Project. And our community development director, Kelly First, is going to present this. Good evening, Kelly.
All right, good evening again. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this request is because COBOL, the developer of the attainable housing project at Ridge Gate Station, is seeking a waiver of 100% of the construction use tax and 100% of the planning, engineering, and building fees totaling $230,546.3. And you will recall that council saw the SIP for this project back in February and approved it. Next slide, please. So ordinance number 21-01, which you recently approved, provides incentives for the development of qualifying attainable housing projects in the city if they meet certain criteria. The criteria to receive 100% waiver is that all units have to provide housing for persons or households with incomes at or below a weighted average of 60% of the AMI for Douglas County, and that projects shall remain affordable for a period of 40 years. Next slide. So the COBOL project meets both of these criteria. Of the 67 units that they're proposing, affordability options range from 30% to 80%, and the weighted average is 56.7% AMI. The project will also remain affordable for 40 years, and that will be evidenced by a land use restriction agreement that will be recorded within 90 days of the project completion, which is a condition in the resolution. Next slide. So the actual fees are outlined much more specifically in your packet, but in summary, the construction use tax alone totals $110,539.39, and the total of all of the review fees and permit fees are $120,664, which is how we arrive at that total. Next slide. So with that, I'll take any questions and leave the suggested motion up for you.
Thanks. Any questions from council on this? On this? All right, I will look for the motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 21-12, a resolution approving a waiver of 100% of construction use tax and plan review and building permit fees for the Ridge Gate Station Affordable Housing Project.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Four to zero. Thanks, Kelly, and thanks for your good work on this project. All right, that concludes our agenda with the exception of council comments, and we will start with Councilmember Anderson.
I don't know if they have any comments tonight.
Well, I think the comment is, I think you're grateful to get your vaccine and ready to start living your life in 2021. We know what your comments are, sir. You just need to get that snow off that golf course and watch out. There you go. All right, Wynne, any thoughts for you this evening?
Yes, I had the opportunity to take a tour of the South Suburban Sports Complex, and so much thought went into that building, and so much good fortune played in with interest rates and terms of financing. And I feel so fortunate to be working with a partner, South Suburban, who really thinks things through and delivers the type of quality and amenities that our residents will benefit from. And it's a lovely facility, so many places to enjoy, even in the winter months, when you're playing in a covered space, including skating, so lovely.
It's great. It's great. Kathy?
Just a quick thank you to my partners on council for allowing me to miss the last council meeting.
Yeah, we still see your tan.
A much deserved break. It's been a very rough year, as many of you know, and I was just so grateful for the time away, and grateful to the city of Lone Tree for having a COVID testing site right here, because the only way that we got out of town was by making the three-day period between testing and boarding the plane, and just really grateful for that site. And if you haven't used it, it's unbelievable. You register online, you drive up, it's very unpleasant for just a moment in time, and then you have your results. We had our results the two times that we did it in less than 24 hours. Just really a remarkable feat of what they're delivering there, so just very grateful for them.
That's great. And, you know, I think it's important to note, we've got two great business partners that are championing those efforts. We've got the testing facility that Canvas is allowing to be located at their facility, and then Charles Schwab with the vaccination site. So I think, again, Lone Tree continues to punch above our weight, and I think that's due in great part to great, wonderful partnerships, our great health partners, our great corporate partners, and I think also our great work by staff and the Tri-County Health Department. So I think we're very fortunate. I think we're all very aware of the biggest news in town was our fourth-largest snowstorm on record here in the city of Lone Tree, and we all pride ourselves on snow removal. But really, what we pride ourselves on is public safety, and certainly when we see a storm like we saw, expectations cannot be that you're going to go out the next morning and not see snow. But I really have to shout out and kudos to our Public Works Department, our Public Safety Department, a special shout out to our Administrative Services Director, Bill Medina, who spent most of, I believe it was Saturday evening, at the warming shelter that was set up at the Lone Tree Rec Center. We did have some folks that were stranded on city roads and on our I-25 system, and they came there and they were taken care of. So I think it was great planning and work pre-storm by the city staff that allowed for the great response that we had. If your snow removal isn't quite where you want it to be, we're just going to ask you to be a little more patient. Fourth-biggest storm on record, and I think if you compare the great work done here, just travel a little further to the north or south, and I don't think it's going to look quite the same as it does in your yard. So I want to wish everybody a very happy St. Patrick's Day, according to one of my council members, the second most important holiday of the year. I hope you're all able to share it safe and snug and warm at home with your friends with a pint of Guinness. So thanks very much, and we are adjourned.